Movie is absent. Pam?
Here.
Tyler?
Here.
We have a quorum. Approval of minutes of the previous meetings.
I'll move.
Okay, second?
Second now.
All in favor? Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries claims and payroll?
I just have the questions on. Make a motion to approve claims and payroll?
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries reports manner. Police Department. Good evening.
Good evening. Don't have a whole lot to talk about. It's anywhere in the month of October, kind of slow, which is good. We had a very good Halloween night. Had no disruptions, no thefts, no smashed pumpkins around. Kids of all ages were very well behaved. So, all I have, unless you have any questions.
Have anything come up?
No.
Okay, while you're... We have exciting news, one applicant for the open position for the Chief of Police for Plainview, and it is interim chief, formerly Sergeant Gerald Newman. With your approval, I would like to appoint Jerry to take off the interim label and make him permanent Chief of Police for as long as he is able to perform that job. With the council's blessing. Any discussion?
I made the last plan on the mayor's recommendation to appoint Jerry as Chief of Police.
Okay, second? Any further discussion? Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Well, yeah, congratulations. Coming by. Nice, good.
We had a visit earlier, there's gonna be a few minor changes that will happen, but change is always inevitable. Economic Development, Susan.
Um, we'll talk too much about the fourplex project, um, because it's later on on the agenda, but we did, obviously, as we mentioned last month, reduce that award from 452 to 427, just to free up that additional unit, so it would not be income qualified. So we'll have three units, or two units income qualified and two that are not. And then Bruce had some questions earlier about putting a lien on it, since the city, it is a grant to the city and the city is on the hook. Lowell did answer that question by saying that, um, in the past, these rental projects have involved an MOU agreement between the city and the developer, indicating that all provisions of the grant contract will be followed and enforced, and enforcement details if needed. All grant requirements would then be identified in part of the document filed with a property deed. Previous projects have also involved a document attached to the property deed, which identified the income restrictions, the number of income qualified units. If the property is sold before the end of the affordability period, in this case, it's seven years, then the new owner would be responsible for those requirements and reporting to the DED. So, um, he just, he will go ahead and pull some examples of these MOUs from other community projects and forward them on to Bruce and the city, so you will be able to look at that. So, that's just kind of where we are. Um, in other news on the housing project, we have started the environmental review process on the site itself. This includes sending the letters out to the tribal communities, um, letting them know that there's a property going in here and making sure that there's no Indian burial ground or some other ceremonial religious reason why we can't do that. The environmental process takes thirty to sixty days, so that's the start of it. Let's see, on the CDBG disaster recovery block grant, this is the grant where you can get twelve and a half percent of your FEMA down payment back. They still have not released the guidelines, but they are still saying the deadline is December thirty first, so this will be really interesting when it happens. On the CDBG downtown revitalization grant, yes, a couple days ago, we found out that we did get awarded the $435,000 grant for downtown. This is, um, to improve building conditions, facades, awnings, signage, um, and then for the city, $20,000 was set aside to do some demolition work. If there are some buildings downtown that the city is interested in doing some demo work on, we probably need to start working on acquiring those properties, because we don't actually own any of them at the moment, so I leave that up to you guys to determine which properties you want to go after, but sooner rather than later will be the timeframe for that. Let's see, the World Innovation Challenge Grant, uh, we did receive our funding from the USDA, so your anticipated start date is February or March 2021 to start working with Bobby from Five Rule. As she wraps up Pierce and Madison County, we'll be reaching out to you to start, you'll have to form a focus group, it will include all of the council, but any other key leaders or stakeholders in the community that you want to be part of this process, um, you'll pull them together, and you'll get more details as we get closer, so you know who to pull and how this is gonna work, but this is about a four to six month project for you. And I know zoning is something you really want to focus on, so we'll be bringing Heather McWarder, who's the Pierce County zoning administrator in, so she can kind of help guide some of the zoning and stuff like that, so. LB840, we're currently working on an RBDG and IRP application. We were hoping to have that done for you guys tonight to approve by COVID strikes, so we had to call off the meeting and we're, hopefully have it in front of you next, next month. Hometown holidays are downtown trick or treat event, really well. We estimate we had about 250 kids and families attending. The rest of the hometown holiday events are going on as scheduled for now, those Saturday, December twelfth, you'll see the flyers in the Plainview News, um, and the chamber did authorize Brooke to start printing some of those flyers, so you'll start seeing those around town, all the events that are listed for that day. Ending with the Holiday Light Parade at six o'clock, we do encourage everyone to participate in the Holiday Light Parade if possible. Have listed the conferences tomorrow, I'll be a guest presenter on, for the Connecticut Rural and Entrepreneurial Communities Conference, um, this is with University of Michigan, University of Nebraska, and eight other universities in eight states. We'll be presenting, actually, on Plainview, um, how we use the ECAP data from 2018 to accomplish our community placemaking, housing, and DTR goals over the last two years. Recording of this, uh, session will be on the PCD website, hopefully by next week, so you can watch it if you want. On Pierce County Economic Development, we do have a new business, Untangled, in Pierce, Nebraska, it's attached to Expressions Floral. We did hire the Plainview Chamber Secretary to assist Osmond and Pierce business owners to register for our shopwhereilive.com website, so hopefully we have the majority of the businesses across the county registered by the end of November, we can do a big Christmas, um, promotion. We've applied for two RFI interns for May 2020, if you recall, our, our RFI interns last year were Marie and Judith, and they were phenomenal. And we are working on development of youth leadership and entrepreneurship summer courses with University of Nebraska, Rural Prosperity, and the ESHIP department. This came out as a high priority for the students that answered the ECAP survey in Plainview, Osmond, and Pierce, so we are going to do a collaborative countywide, something in the summer, we're working on pulling that together, should hopefully last about six weeks, get them some really good, um, instruction in that, and, um, we'll see how it goes. Any questions? No? Okay.
Thank you, Susan.
Yep?
Kurt is out moving snow, does Jeremy have it, or did anybody read his report? Alright. Number five, discussion action keynote grants held over from last month, Plainview FFA for $2,300, Mr. Komet?
I'm here.
Thank you for coming.
So, I, I don't know what questions you have, um, I don't know if I'll be able to answer them.
They were wondering like what, uh, because the bowling league had, or bowling had requested funds and they thought, like, the school district would help pay, you know, they were just wondering how the FFA falls under the school district, or what they pay for, what they don't, what you raise money for.
School has been kept recovering, most of my equipment costs, whatnot, this is something I've been wanting to do for a while, um, but it's not really something that... It's a, am I gonna keep teaching Ag if I don't have this? Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna keep teaching the kids. The school covers those things that, hey, I have to have a new welder, okay, let's get one. And we've, we've done some of those, some of those things, and some pretty big outlays there, it's probably not gonna get, you know, I'm probably not gonna be able to get the nights to be able to do things through the school budget, and, you know, basically, I said, well, I'm gonna go look for, I'm gonna go look for funding elsewhere, and I said, great, um, so this is kind of where I started. Yeah, I, I just try, I try to keep things in the kids' hands, uh, to keep them somewhat current, there's no way we're gonna stay completely current with agriculture, the way it moves, um, but if we can at least, you know, keep some kind of, you know, some of the technologies that are there, um, having some of those things allows me to talk about some of the other things, you know, we may not have the, the, you know, the John Deere's GPS, you know, field mapping program that is ridiculously expensive. But, you know, we can talk about precision agriculture, and, you know, having a drone there allows us to do, to do some of those things, so.
Are you a current pilot, or, because you have to have some sort of pilot license, right?
Uh, if you're gonna do...
Four hundred feet?
Yeah, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do it for commercial.
Yeah, commercial, okay.
I'm pretty sure that a lot of the education stuff falls into the leave schools alone clause.
I just wasn't sure.
But, yeah, you know, and that's, yeah, I don't necessarily want to, you know, we're not gonna, I'm not gonna try to start a drone surveying business, um, I've got too many other things to do, but, uh, you know, if I can take a drone out and fly it over a couple fields and see some soil compaction, if we can, you know, we can see how, you know, hey, we know there's soil compaction on this field, and what does, what do the plants look like differently, um, and then, you know, if we can, if we can throw the infrared view on top of that, okay, here's what, here's what the plants are showing us, that, you know, there's, there's not as much water, uh, evaporant transpiration happening in this spot, that's why the plants don't look as good, um, so.
Well, I was brought up about fire department possibly using it and the police department?
Well, that's, when I, when I started this, I wasn't looking at the, at the FLIR thermal imaging, I was just looking at a straight up drone, but I started looking at, going, okay, well, if you're gonna spend this amount for not a lot more, you can get to the, to the next step, and that puts a, that would put a drone in the town that has thermal imaging capabilities. At the top, and one of the times that I happened to be thinking about it was when they were asking for help going up to Creighton, you know, Denver, it's where a big part of our FFA chapter in, and, you know, not that it would have helped, not that, I'm not saying it wouldn't make a difference, but, you know, every little bit might help, I don't know. Those are just options, there's options that I know some committees have, and I think we have access to some of them, but if there was one, it'll maybe be a little handier than Pierce, and there were people that could use it, you know, by all means, you know, tools need to be used.
Sure.
I just remind, sorry, for the audience, the keynote balance is thirty-three, five fifteen ninety, three-three, five-one-five ninety in the account.
You wanna say that again, Brian?
Oh, sorry, three-three, sorry, thirty-three thousand, five hundred fifteen dollars, ninety-six.
That's as of the end of October, I just put a deposit in last week for a little over four thousand for quarterly, so.
So about thirty-seven, thirty?
Yeah, we're about at thirty-eight thousand.
Thirty-eight thousand, yeah. And again, they're asking for twenty-three hundred, which you can offer, or all, or partial, or none? Do you have any questions for Mr. Komet?
I guess they don't chat, is the fifteen hundred, is that the most you guys could raise?
The fifteen hundred, basically, I, I've got a grant, I got a grant from Land of Lakes, uh, it's a matching grant with Farmer's Pride. We usually end up getting about a thousand from that, but I think with COVID and everything, they got a lot more applications, so our, that grant was a little lower, and it's, I went talking to them, this is just everybody's grants, were a lot lower. The, I was gonna, we were gonna put in about five hundred dollars from the chapter, and I, you know, just talked to the chapter, said, well, we'll just, we'll, we'll increase ours to a thousand, so the kids are, the kids, the FFA chapter themselves are willing to put in about a thousand dollars out of their budget, um, you know, and that's, that's where the fifteen hundred comes up, comes, comes from.
Any questions?
Well, I know you and I talked a lot about it, and I, I just, I got no problem with investing in technology, especially for the kids, I mean, I think it's awesome. I just don't think you're gonna, and I think it's a great idea. The negative part about it is I don't think you're gonna get the results like you, everybody thinks you get off of what we're purchasing, or you're purchasing, excuse me. But I, I mean, like I said, though, I'm more than willing to invest in technology for the kids.
And here, here's the thing, and, and maybe I wasn't articulate on the phone or whatnot, the results that I expect are probably different than what the results maybe of community members are thinking of. The results that I expect are kids experience different new technology, different technologies that they haven't experienced before, um, in ways that maybe are meaningful to them. Yeah, would I love to be able to take a thermal image of, of the field and say, here's a weed, here's a weed, here's a weed, that technology's out there, it's about $24,000 for that camera.
Well, through, company on Colorado was about five, I think.
What's that?
I think about five grand, and you did it through Colorado, uh, map back in about thirty minutes, just kind of like your satellite imaging.
Right, and that, that's the thing, is you, you can run, you can run so much different, I get, I, I, talking with Toby King, he said, yeah, don't, don't go that route, because I can hook you up with a free account, and we can get you all that stuff from our satellite. I'm like, oh, okay, well, then let's not do that, um, you know, and there, there's NDEVI cameras that measure the, the difference in color and spectrums, and, and they're a lot more expensive. And, and, you know, I could still, I could still back this off and go to a, go to a simple Mavic Pro that has a regular camera and go take picture, go, go, go scan the field and take pictures and see weeds, and, and, hey, we need to go look at that part of the field. We can back, I can back it down and do that and disregard the thermal imaging part. My, my thoughts on the thermal imaging, after just watching some YouTube videos and talking to some of the other Ag teachers that have looked at some of this stuff, you know, they, they're telling me that, yeah, it's not perfect, but it's, it's pretty good. You know, some of the videos you see, you'll, you'll see them, they, they'll take the temperature of this item over here, and the temperature of this item over here, and they can, you know, they can tell the difference in degrees on the screen. Now, it all has to do with, and you could, you probably helped me, helped me, it all has to do with how far away you are from the image that, from the, from the...
The one that I dealt with, I mean, you were a hundred and twenty feet up in the air, and it's just more of the canopy, how far is the growth?
Yeah, see, I think that's the, I think that's the drawback from, for the, this mini, the, the smaller, you know, camera, because I think you have to be a little closer. I mean, I don't think you have to be twenty feet, but, you know, some of these, some of these cameras that I'm talking about, they're talking hundreds of feet in the air to get huge, huge paths.
Stitch the map together.
Just won't do that, you know, I mean, it, it's gonna have to be line, you know, we're gonna have to be able to see the darn thing, but I don't want to fly something I can't see anyway. So, you know, I, my, my thought, to, to the, to the point of what I'm trying to get to is, my expectations are probably different as the, as the educator. My expectations are, did they, did they get an experience they wouldn't have gotten someplace else? And the, the data that we collect is probably secondary to the experience of collecting the data, you know? If the data was driving the decision, this isn't the, this isn't probably the, the tool, but that's not, that's not what's driving what I want the kids to learn. The secondary part is, is, this has got pretty good reviews from a lot of the, a lot of the search and rescue, you know, they're saying, you know what, it gets the job done, it's not, you know, they're, they're, most of them aren't drone operators either, they want something simple, they can put up an ear and fly around, hey, can we find something? And to that end, you, we, we may use it class that way too, to, you know, say, hey, you know what, let's, let's, uh, hide and seek, can you guys go hide, and somebody's gonna go find you, and, you know, is that, is that a way to teach kids that, hey, you know what, you can be part, you know, if there's something going on, you can be part of your local community, you can be part of the voluntary fire department, you, you know? So that, like I said, my, my expectations are probably different than, you know, how, how schools come out.
Well, technology's where it's going, people, so you better start jumping up, you gotta catch up, you guys remember, ready behind?
That should be the school job, though, I mean, people would argue that...
Right, that you guys should support your community, your school, and help pay for that stuff.
Well, Brian, you asked for funding from the school, yeah?
Huh?
We are by reviewing this application, discussing it.
I know, but you act like you don't want, you know...
Oh, I just got done saying how supportive I am of it. I just don't, I just want to remind everybody, the results that I've gotten before doing what I did with the drone, isn't the same what, so I just want to make sure that's clear. Well, I think you could argue too, that that question and that criticism would be better directed at the school than it would be at the city council, and that's why I'm, I didn't know, did the school reject the funding for the, for the drone?
Uh, I, I have kind of an understanding of, of what I can, you know, what kind of budget there is.
Did you not, did you not ask?
I did, I did make a formal request to the school, because I, I, there are other, there are things that I have to get, um, to be able to teach the things that I'm already in, um, this is kind of a, this is kind of an expansion, um, and so I, you know, I wasn't ready to go there, and I knew that, you know, I, I know that that's, you know, that's not in the budget right now. To, to, to be fair to school, though, I can probably count on one hand the times when I've gone to school and says, hey, I really, I, I need, I need this to be able to do my job, or when there's even been a, a question of whether or not we should get it. I, I don't get turned down for the things that I ask for very often, but I, you know, I don't ask, you know, willy-nilly, you know? And, and in the same here, I, I'm, you know, I, I, just transparency, I told, I told the school, we wanted to be, I wanted to be able to do this, uh, Mr. Schmidt was like, that, that'd be phenomenal, uh, but he doesn't see it happening, you know, no, down the road, is it something, if, if I push for it, we budget, you know, could, could it come, could it come about, could maybe, um, but I did, I kind of told him, says, well, I'm gonna go look for funding, um, and I do, I do that a lot, um, you know, we have a platform type we have at school. I wrote a grant for it, um, probably not something most schools are gonna outright buy, some do, most don't, um, I've gotten used to trying to write grants and find, find the money to help support the program, so.
We talked last month, this would be beneficial to the, the fire department and the police department? Does anybody have any ideas, like what, how would work? How would the fire department use it?
Sure, like when the hardware stores on fire, when Pierce came up, they brought theirs up just to, obviously, because it was unsafe to go in with, right with thermal imaging camera, that they, you know, kind of...
So, I mean, seems like it could be beneficial to the whole community.
Well, from the fire department standpoint, I mean, any kind of a mediocre thermal image will find a human in a cornfield, or something like that, I mean, you could look for a kid...
Because of the, years ago, when we had...
Things like that.
How many big prisons up, once you had walked in?
Yeah, were you saying that you weren't looking at the thermal imaging now?
That, that's what this, this one, this one, the FLIR's, um, micro, I'm gonna say it wrong, mini, micro, there, um, there's their new camera, it's, it's linked with the regular camera, and so you can superimpose the lines from the regular picture onto the thermal, so you, you can actually understand what you're seeing, um, that's what a lot, a lot of the comments that were coming from the police department, you know, um, there's a, there's a National Firemen's Association something website, they actually sell FLIR, the DJI sells them, these to sell to their members at a little bit reduced rate, because, you know, yeah, it's not the top of line thermal imaging camera, that's not what you want, you, you want something that's gonna find a body in a cornfield.
And that's what you were bringing up, I mean, it's not top of the line.
The, the package that I wrote, I think, I think the drone comes with two, but I put in, uh, in the, the extended flight kit with the extra batteries, because that's...
They're quick.
That's, but this, the, the, what the, the claims are, it's about a thirty minute flight per battery.
If you're using the thermal imaging, it cuts it down.
Like, I would imagine, I would imagine thirty-one minutes is bring it up ten feet off the ground and hover.
Right, last summer, we had a bull get loose from the vet here in town, and he, of course, ran into the farm fields right behind Farmer's Pride, so straddling two highways, we needed to find him in eight foot tall corn, and Pierce Fire Rescue brought their drone up, but we burned through four batteries looking for, for an hour, so, that's why I said batteries.
I think it's, I think we're looking about four batteries is what I was, I think, with the, with the extra, yeah, and yeah, that's, you know, we're gonna want extra batteries, and we're gonna probably have to get, you know, but those are the kind of things that if I have something like this, when I go to the school and say, um, I need to buy new batteries, because the batteries are no good anymore, it's, it's okay, buy the batteries, make, make your, make your tools work, so.
We've had plenty of discussion, is there any action?
I guess since it benefits the whole community and the kids too, I mean, it's the wave of the future, I would like to see us funded entirely.
Second?
One second, Tab.
Motion been made in second to approve $2,300 keynote grant for the Plainview FFA. Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries. At seven PM, we will jump to number eleven, public hearing for one and six year street plan.
Uh, thank you very much, Chris.
You're very welcome.
You're held captive till the very end.
Everybody is hot.
Good, huh, Gary?
Jerry?
Nope.
Dictionary or what?
Oh, little post-its, little post-its.
Thank you.
Write yourself a note. And when you get done using all the post-its, it's made of wood, so you can chop it up and use it for killing, or something like that.
I was gonna sell it, it was expensive.
So, on the one and six year, um, does everybody remember what the one and six year is all about?
Yeah.
And you've all got maps?
Yeah.
Have you got?
I didn't send it back in.
Does anybody out here want maps? Does want maps?
That's not something you need, so you got to...
She's gonna put it on the screen to here, if you can, Brian.
I can put myself...
You, you, okay. I don't think it's...
Um, just so I remember to have the council, the MOU.
This is last year's map?
Just so everybody's clear, the one and six year plan is, is basically that a plan, it is a planning document, it is required by NDOT, um, that you complete every year, it's one of the checkmarks you have to have to get your highway funding, your highway allocation funds, uh, every year, um, and, uh, basically, um, I brought last year's map, and traditionally, what you folks have done is we've got, we've taken a look at the map, you get suggestions, and, um, comments from the public, and then you kind of leave it open for about a month, and then you come back next, next meeting and, and pass the resolution, and, and you move forward, so. The program has changed slightly in the last couple of years, in that, um, basically, we used to have to submit the plan to NDOT, and now, all you do is submit a certification, and Courtney should have gotten that to you last month, and, so you, you, uh, pass that certification, and, and that shows that you've, you're in alignment with the program, and then, once we get this all done, all, any changes made and updated, you just gotta have a copy of it on file. And so, that's, um, pretty much the long and short of it, um, do you want to go through the map at all? The streets that, um, we looked at, um, uh, for paving, um, last year was Lincoln and, and Euclid, um, Lincoln behind the, uh, or over by the, um, football field, and Euclid over, uh, beside the hospital, um, those are, um, waiting for funding, um, but I did show those on the one-year program for this. We've also showed Ellsworth as a one-year, um, but I guess I would open it up and, a lot, for comments, any changes, any additions, and Jeremy and I talked a little bit before the meeting, and he's got some ideas, and, and so, um, and understand that, um, we, because we show these kind of broken up, that doesn't mean in the future you can't combine them as a project, so if your funding is available, you could do that. Also, understand that just because you pass this doesn't mean it can't be changed... Also understand that just because you pass this doesn't mean it can't be changed sometime through the year. Um, but again, it is a planning document, you are not obligated to build anything in one year and you're not obligated to build anything in six-year. Some of the communities I go to for the past seven years have never changed their plan. And so, um, but it is, it is a requirement, so, any questions?
Where'd you see Ellsworth on the one-year?
That was my request last year.
Oh, okay.
It's. It's in the breakout. Well, Euclid.
Change, it was just a report.
Euclid is Hoffler Road.
Okay.
Or how you pronounce it, I don't know.
Am I backwards, Ellsworth, I, I'm showing on my map, Ellsworth is, um, red for the two blocks between, um, where am I at?
Second and third.
Between second and third, does your map show that?
No.
It's probably on the new one she sent me, but.
Not getting away all my maps.
No, that's, that's the one I told you about last year.
Six here.
This one shows the, uh. I got two left.
Can I look at your?
It's in the resolution that way.
Oh, it's not this one, okay.
Can I just look, or I don't wanna take it, I just wanna look.
The map in the package that's number eleven is not accurate.
That's the last one, she just sent me a new one on Monday.
So she sent you the wrong one?
She sent me a new one Monday, which I was gonna bring on the screen, but it's not pulling up still. Yes, this is the new one.
Go ahead.
Okay, this one, um.
Are we in the public comment? Yeah. Can I make a comment? Jeremy and I, we talked about this, so I hope this is no shock, but, um, Fifth Street, over by where the L B eight forty lots are. Um, you know, we're building that fourplex on just north of them, and we've got three lots on the backside, um, you know. It's hard to sell those lots when there's no road there and, um, with our investor on the current fourplex, you know, his, his ultimate goal is eventually to do that project again on the other side on Fifth Street. So, I don't know if we can put that on the one in six somewhere, we need to do that for gravel road or not, but I'd like to have it on there. Economic development purposes.
These maps combined.
Yeah.
It was on it before, Susan, we took it off. Oh, is this, okay, see, this map didn't have it on there, it's not, it got taken off. Can we add it again?
So Fifth Street, you wanna add Fifth Street from where to where?
Oh, it seemed to be like from.
Fifth to Ohio.
Yeah, like Euclid to Ohio.
Has, has a gravel.
Put it in as a gravel.
Uh, I know, I know, we've got requests, uh, so I'm sure Brian's here, I'm assuming Brian's Street, which is, uh, Sixth, which is a two hundred block of the north six, which is Woodland to Pilcher.
Six.
And then I've also suggested from on Pilcher from fourth all the way to sixth, so there'd be an L in there of three blocks, that's just, that was my idea, I know. Um, there's a ton of truck traffic that circles behind Casey's because of the way their pumps are set up. And so they actually turn it into four, they come down by the school, go back around behind Casey's and have to come back to get in there. So I know there's a ton of traffic there and I know maintenance on that street's been, uh, worked there, so.
So, so Pilcher from?
Fourth to Sixth.
Sixth to fourth, okay.
Yep, um, and in my mind, when I thought about from fifth to sixth, the reason that was, was while there's church there, but essentially it's because if you're bidding it out, I thought three continuous blocks essentially would be, you know, more conducive for bidding and. I mean, if I was bidding on a project, it'd make it easier, we didn't have to pick up and go anywhere. And then I, I suggested all the, all, all the, well, actually Kurt suggested all the, um, gap paving, so on, on this little box here, so we already have. No, others? Too many maps here. This one's okay.
So six blocks up by the hospital.
Yep.
And then Sixth Street.
Was it, was it suggestion?
Yeah.
And I, I also suggested take, take off Lincoln Street personally, so. Off the one-year plan. And mostly because that's all, that's all, essentially all taxpayers' dollars, that's city owns one side, um, school owns the other, and legally it's not even a plot of the street, we have to finish plotting it out, so that's one's not. My personal opinion wouldn't be ready for us to do in a year, but. Like, so that's just suggestion from me, and you guys are.
Have you talked to the neighbors, Brian, are they still, like, wanting it paved eventually or?
Some of them are, yeah, I haven't talked to all of them though, but.
Again, these are also my suggestions, these aren't actually anything that, um, should be given to you guys.
I think the biggest thing on our period is, uh, you know, what it's gonna cost and that's gonna be the deciding factor on, upon, if they wanna do it or not, so.
So six is what, that's what, that's what they actually signed, so this one, then these two. Yep, this one, this is.
Pilcher, how hard would you say, Woodland or?
Yeah, just, just that one block from Brian's Street is what they actually, who wouldn't buy it until they actually had signatures.
Right.
Yes, it is.
You want Fourth Street paved all the way to your house, or you want that on the plan?
No.
No?
Okay.
Absolutely not.
Just a plan.
A lot of people like the rough road down there on Line Street, people slow down.
Speed bumps, right, natural speed bumps.
That's right. Any other thoughts? So right now I've got sixth, or Fifth Street, excuse me, from Euclid north to Ohioa as a gravel road.
Yep.
I've got Sixth Street from Pilcher to Woodland.
Yep.
Is that gravel, that's on the, that's on the sixth, that's on the Sixth Street plan, all right?
Yes, sir, that would be Sixth Year.
Okay.
You tell me on, on Sixth Street, which, do you want that as a one-year or Sixth Year?
Sixth Year.
Sixth Year?
Oh, that's, that's Brian's. Brian, that'd be on, that'd be on the one-year.
Or one-year, okay.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting, I don't know.
Okay, and then the, the same with the, uh, Pilcher, uh, three, or two, two blocks on Pilcher?
Fourth to Sixth.
Fourth to Sixth?
I was just all the one.
Yeah, that, that'd be fine.
One-year?
Still don't mean you're gonna do it, at least it's.
And then, do we wanna remove, um, Lincoln from a one-year to a six-year?
Correct.
Okay.
Who's that? Yeah.
Again, it's a plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's move.
You can always move it to the one, even if it's on your sixth, correct, you can bump it up at any time.
Right. Yep, not a big deal, it is a plan, understand the word plan.
That's right.
So I can make those changes?
Absolutely.
And get you revisions probably before the end of the week?
Okay.
And so then, um, on this map. And, uh, then we'll go from there, any other questions on the one in six?
Thank you for having you.
Do we keep this hearing essentially open until next month, when we talk about it again, or they just vote on it next month?
They just vote on passage next month, they give the, 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 uh, my mind just went blank, give the public an opportunity to comment. And then you can take it under advisement for your next meeting and then just pass the resolution, as part of this, you gotta pass the resolution. And so, um, you know, how you, I won't be here next meeting, but how you guys, uh, work that in, um, is fine, so. The only other thing I got is the need surveys, and I'll give these to you, and so you guys can give it to Kurt. Need surveys are for your S R F funding, um, basically, uh, it's one of those things that if you're on the program, money's available, if you're not in the program, money's not available. So we always make sure our clients put something in, it's again, it's a no obligation plan, and so, um, I'll give this to Courtney, she can go through it with Kurt, and we can go from there, but thank you for your time.
Yeah, no, thank you for coming up.
Throat's weren't bad, so.
Okay, number six.
Come on out publicly. Come on out publicly.
Oh, yeah.
Make a motion to come out publicly.
One second.
Okay, all in favor of Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Number six, discussion action approval of updated Nebraska Affordable Housing Trust Fund Program.
This is the fourplex again, um, but Bruce is the one that had some comments, so I'll let Bruce talk.
One I brought with me, the other is the contract that I've got a thing we can hand out. On this, the, the comments were kind of technical on the question of the city needing to have a lien because the city is loaning the money. The grant people are loaning it to the city and the city is loaning it to the developer. So I brought that up and as she mentioned, Lowell has answered and said they do have a plan to have that handled, we've got to have something. If they don't come up with something that looks adequate, we can always make a secondary note and have the owner sign it that he agrees. They owe the city if there's ever a default because the city's gonna be on the hook and have to pay the thing off. So we gotta have some kind of a lien on the property, but that was the only thing I brought, otherwise, the, the form is fine, it's back to fixing it to say that it's. Two rent subsidized units and two more, I think it's all what you're looking for.
Any further discussion for the council? Motion for action to approve?
I'll make the motion for the approval of the updated, in the H T F grade of the contract.
Second?
Second then.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries, number seven, discussion action, resolution number six fourteen, authorized signers general bank account.
I just need to update this, um, back when Darren had resigned and we were kind of limbo, we put Mike Holton on the general account as a signer. I have to do a resolution to take him back off, so this is just to update it, um, the current mayor, myself, and Melissa's all the authorized signers on the general account, so. This is a formality to give to the bank so they know who can sign on that account.
Motion to pass resolution six fourteen?
Second?
One second.
Pam?
Abstain.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Want me to vote just, Bruce, just, there was two, two abstainers, you know?
I was on to the next contract, what was your vote?
It was, um, for the approval for the bank signing, it was two to zero with the one abstention, I just didn't know if it looked better.
I think you need to proceed, that's the majority of what you got, for simple motion.
Number eight, discussion action, resolutions for nuisance properties, resolution number six sixteen, two zero seven South King.
And there are two of these, let me hand them down. There's the two oh seven South King, and there's the two oh nine South King. It got to be a bit confused because the council at the last meeting talked about wanting to have this order to be cleaned up by the first of November. But we're not passing the resolution until now. So I choked on that a little bit and told Courtney that seemed to make no sense to me, I don't think you can pass a resolution that says you should have had it cleaned up a week ago. Uh, so what I changed it to was honor before November eleven, it should be cleaned up tomorrow, I mean, immediately. The people have been notified, they've been working on it, but there's little point to pass the formal resolution to say that it's supposed to have happened a week ago. Uh, that'll also essentially make a correction in your last month's minutes that you had a motion to take action to go by the first of November. But if you pass the resolution, I think that clarifies it and your resolution is, is the governing item. So I think you, if you're gonna go forward, you've already kind of decided to do that, you just need to pass both these resolutions and you're moving on requiring the cleanup.
Pass resolution six one six?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll make the motion to you pass resolution six one seven.
Second.
Second, Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine, discussion action, health board recommendations for nuisance properties, six zero two West Park Avenue. This should be this, uh, stockwell property currently, um, along the highway between West and Elm.
Is this the commercial building?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's where Bob has his attorney's office and I think they're.
Can you put it on the L B two fifty-six plan? There's piles of trees and stuff there. But it's still vacant, can we put it on the L B two? We just need to get the stuff outside cleaned up.
It's actually, it's not vacant.
There's, there's business in there.
Bob, Bob, there it is.
Okay, one of the two buildings is vacant.
Well, what's your plan here, you're just looking for authority to send the cleanup letter?
Yep.
I'll make that motion to send the cleanup letter to the six zero two West Park.
Second?
One second then.
Any discussion? Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries, number ten, discussion action, resolution six fifteen, signing of year-end certificate, certification, city street superintendent.
This is actually Gary who just talked about, that we have to sign in order to get your funding for highway allocation. I just got it, that's why it's in your packet tonight, so. You do this, you get your highway allocation money, submit your, or have your plan on hand and then that's how you get your money back from the state. It just says that we're appointing Reed Miller from Miller Associates as our engineer, um, and then I sent the state, our street, our city street superintendent.
I don't know, are there any second? Make a resolution to pass six one five?
Okay, second?
Second.
Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion carries, number twelve, discussion water rate increases.
That's fun.
That's why everybody's here today.
Yeah, uh, so obviously we've been talking about this long before the budget, we've got five other things coming. Um, my current water issues and everything, um, it's only obviously gotten worse. Here are, we just got these, these aren't in packages, just came in from the engineers, this is, um, a rough estimate because we're not for sure where the well. Everything else will go yet, due to the nitrate levels and our studies are not complete yet, but I asked, I asked Roger Prossman, who's from J D O, who's doing our, our water studies on. What would be a rough estimate of a new well system setup, turnkey? Like, say that, and so. More recklessly, how much, I don't know. I'll, I'll, it'll be up there too. Um, so that's just an estimate, so, you know what we've got, you should. Can we switch?
I don't have that one on there because Kurt didn't get it too, so.
What's, what's that one? Yeah, we just, yeah, we just got those in the mail, I'll switch this to the, uh, yes, this one. So. So this is obviously in your package, so, we knew this going in, um, we're actually spending obviously two hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars centrally out of reserves. So we knew we had problems going into the budget season, uh, we did the best we could to minimize it, because it was worse. So, what we did this year is essentially take our list, really what we had left, and we took. So what we did this year is essentially take our list, really what we had left and we took, we probably drained it down. It's, it's an extra slush fund down to help support everything currently. And so I want to show that out here. And then our water, if you can see, wow, that's really blurred, you probably really can't see. But it's all in your package. But anyway, the water's starting and we spent about thirty dollars, thirty thousand out of water savings this year already as we are. So we're dipping out of it and with obviously our high nitrates and our need for well and our upkeep, it'll be worse. So here's what is a hypothetical budget and this is a quick budget. This can obviously, this will change. This is just a hypothetical budget that we are, that I threw together to kind of show what the cost will be for, for next year. You know, pretty simple across the board, three percent increase, ten percent increase for employee insurance. Like I said, this is all hypothetical. This isn't anything I did, only you tell me, you know, can you tell them what's going to happen a year from now? Obviously, that's never going to be the case. So with the rate that we put together, as you can see, we'd only make, I'm going to say make, we would only increase about twenty thousand dollars from where we're at in our balance here. So this is the big, the big ticket item I like to show people. So projected, projected at the end of this fiscal year, a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in the bank. With the new rates, we would come up with a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So that's, you know, roughly average about twenty thousand dollars. But that does not add a bond payment in any of this, so. So here you're looking at a nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar well and we don't, we haven't even had those bond payments into our hypothetical budget yet. So as you can see, without raising rates currently, we'll, we'll just keep dipping in our reserve and we'll, we'll go bankrupt essentially is where we're at today. I guess, is there any questions on that? I know that's kind of fast. This is just more of a broad topic discussion, yes?
Just a quick question. So we've talked about this half percent sale, sales tax will fall off the pool or maybe already has. Can that be put towards the bond payment?
That's in twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
And that goes up for the election of the people.
Yeah.
Where it goes, can it be? Yes. It could be if the people so choose it to be.
Okay.
That would cover the bond payment and at the end of the time though, we're still obviously not, we're still down to not making a whole bunch more, but that would stop the increases from happening after that, yes. So that is a possibility of election. It'd be, we find out in November of twenty twenty-two.
Right.
Yes, that is a good point.
Question on these new wells, Jeremy. Have you, have we got test wells to know that the nitrates are better where you're looking?
We, well, where are we looking?
I have no idea.
We don't either. So that's, that's what.
So no, we don't even have.
That's what our aquifer testing that we're currently doing now.
Test wells yet, huh?
We actually have like the lower, the lower Elkhorn is involved in that. They've got test well sites, they have test well sites. But no, we don't. So they projected three thousand foot extension on because they believe we will have to go outside of town.
For what it's worth, I've mentioned this to the council before, but none of you people were here when I mentioned it. You know, this was ten, fifteen years ago. You can run from these nitrates, but you cannot hide. They are all around and if you've got wells that are usable, you need to protect them. I made that argument when the discussion started about the special use permit for the irrigated cornfield between the football field and the hospital. That, you know, that irrigated cornfield is awfully close to your well. And irrigated cornfields are notorious for putting nitrates in the ground. I mean, protection of the area is something the city needs to look at hard. And Prossman and company will probably bring that up again, but now it's almost too late.
Well, that's part of the wellhead protection program they have in place, but you're right. Now, now, I mean, what's?
I mean, once, once, I don't know if you guys have ever studied this, but I had to work on it a lot up in Creighton. Once the nitrates are below the area where the crops can reach them, which is four, five feet, then they're on their way. And you're looking at twenty years or thirty years to work it out, even if you fix it now. And otherwise, it just keeps getting worse. So you're going to have to look hard at this protection thing. Creighton just had a terrible time and finally gave up and went with their treatment plant, which cost them a million dollars and something like, I don't know, three hundred thousand a year to run. I mean, it's just horrendous if you can't come up with decent water.
I would not recommend Creighton's reverse osmosis system.
Have her taste.
It tastes, I used to work for them. It tastes terrible and it has a really bad odor and it's very expensive. And the number one complaint on every survey that ever went out to any resident in Creighton is the cost of the water.
Well, it's horribly expensive to run the system. And then the other thing that they had happen about ten years in up there, and we would have it happen here, is if you end up having to blend too much of the treated water into your well water, the treated water has no minerals in it, so it leaches minerals out of the pipes. And then you're starting to suck up mineral problems from old lead pipes and from old iron pipes and stuff like that. So you, they're, they're limited to about fifty percent of the blend and then you can't do anymore. Because otherwise, the leaching out of the pipes is a disaster of itself. So it's all very bad. Protecting the water is the first, the best place.
Just to clarify where we're at?
Yeah.
And this is probably where you're going with it? So how soon are we looking at test wells or the, or the procedure of all this?
They're still doing the studies from the aquifer test and as soon as, I mean, it's pretty much in motion right now. We're, we're getting the ball rolling, so they're still trying to grab all the results. What I'm told is with all the mapping the aquifer did, we did four weeks ago, something like that. They believe that they'll be able, look at the aquifer, turn it on site essentially and cut it and pretty much find where the nitrates are at with their test wells and other wells that they know of and try to find the best spot for a well. That's, that's essentially their goal, is to try to find the best water for us. Whether that's in town, three miles out, they, they don't know yet.
It's going to be a process.
Yep, it's, yep, and they told us, they told us.
That guy went through the same thing.
Yep, yep. It's like Bruce saying, anymore it's a common occurrence around this area because of cornfields, nitrates, it's lack of protection passed then. We're, we're past the stage of that now. You're not going to go to people and tell them to stop irrigating, so we got to do the best we can currently, so.
And you can, you'll, you'll see what Prossman has to tell you, but in round figures, what we've seen in Creighton or what I've seen any time I've had to study this stuff is underground, the water all generally speaking moves toward the drainage, moves toward the creeks. So here it's probably moving south toward the dry creek drainage underground. We'll see what they say when they come up with their stuff. But that moves the nitrates a quarter mile a year or something like that. Again, that's the study. But it, but it becomes a problem because it just continues to creep and get worse if you don't protect what you can. Whereas the city can only go out a mile, but letting irrigated cornfields be in the middle of town quite a little different than a mile. I mean, I don't hate to, I hate to pick on anybody's livelihood, but if that was still an alfalfa field, I would wager to say our center well would not be as bad as it is. Again, you'll see what Prossman has to say.
So Jeremy, Tom, we, I can't, this is a little boring for you.
Yeah, it's boring.
No, no fault to yours, but so my question is, I know where the basic services level is for other communities. Where does plan you stack up, lower?
Currently, we stack up in the, whoops, sorry. Do I have that slide in here? I had a slide. Currently, our rates are low enough. We stacked up out of a hundred and fifty survey in like the seventeenth percentile of the cheapest. And we have really cheap water.
Okay.
We really do. I mean, look at Brunswick's water, I'm just going to throw out a times because it's recent and people brought it up to me. Brunswick pays thirty-two dollars a month for service charge. Half this proposal, we're still not going to pay that. Creighton, I heard, is more.
Creighton is much more.
So if you want to look at a broad spectrum, we're going to be higher than fifty percent of old numbers from where I'm proposing, but yet locally and currently with is where like Bruce said, people who have nitrate problems, we're still not going to be near, near the top, so. And at the end of the day, do you look, do you look at comparisons in surveys or you look at, do we want to keep going the hole and go bankrupt as a town?
Right.
And have the USDA come in and set our rates mandated or, you know, however it works out? I mean, essentially, we still got, we still got to break even or, you know.
But we're not going to be outraged compared to everyone around us. We're still going to be.
No.
This, you know, very similar. We're actually getting closer to where they are versus being at the bottom level.
So if we want to jump to where, so essentially our year two rate, because we had a three-year step and the reason why the three-year step didn't work, I was going to tell you, if you give, if you give rate analysts the wrong numbers, they're going to come up with the wrong answer. That's just as simple as that. So our year two projection rates is meter fee fifteen dollars, two dollars a thousand and two fifty for over ten thousand, which is what will be on here in December. Our year three rate is fifteen seventy-five with two twenty-five for a thousand and three dollars for everything over ten thousand gallons. I'm proposing the twenty-seven thou, oh, twenty-seven thousand, twenty-seven dollars a meter fee and then just two dollars flat fee all the way across. The reason why I want to take the ten thousand dollars out and not add any more to the gallons, you're, you're taking, you're taking your flood and your droughts out of it. You're not, you're not trying to gain money off the weather. So if it's a flat fee, it's for everyone, it's a guaranteed service cost. We're, we're taking the risk out of it for the government, which is what we want to do. You know, if you have a flood here and all your money's put on the per gallon, you're, you're not going to make it, you're going to be dipping in your reserves. Granted, on the flip side, if you have a drought, you won't make so much money, but I, I feel you're better, you're better with lower risk and covering your, covering your overhead costs.
So twelve dollars, twelve bucks?
Yep, that's what it is. Twelve bucks enough extra on your, on your fee and that's it. And then we'll, we'll hold the two dollar mark for everybody across for every gallon, whether you're getting two thousand gallons or two hundred and twenty-two thousand gallons.
Okay, so we're going to get rid of the, the three-year step?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Right.
So I guess, is there any questions? I mean, this is just for discussion. I'm assuming it'll be more public here next time because they go, oh my goodness, we're raising rates and that's fine. And I want them to come talk to me, ask me any questions. If you guys have any questions, any comments, anything you want me to look up, prove to you essentially, I mean, let me know.
Did you say this would be enough to make the bond payment?
No.
If you had one?
No, we only have a twenty thousand dollar difference in there from, that's hypothetical. It could go down, you know. And on estimate, come in, that, that might, it's an engineer, that might be, that estimate might be a hundred thousand dollars high. We, we don't know. Currently, with that estimate and with these rates, would it make the bond payment? No. A lot of hypotheticals in there yet. Like Susan said, if we alter our money from the pool, it would, it would cover it then. And we'd still, we still need this though to make our budget float. Because as you can tell, our hypothetical budget, we are grabbing more, not true. We are grabbing more transfer money essentially out of, out of the water for two reasons. The electric obviously is depleted now. It can't give anymore. It needs self-sustainingness. And then obviously we've talked about is our valuations are too low, which, so we can't support our own general, which we know is a problem and always has been. So those are, those are two reasons why this transfer is actually still necessary for us and.
How much, I mean, I'm sure you're just going through all this, but black and white, with this new increase, we're still transferring out?
Mm-hmm. In fact, we're transferring out more. We transferred out thirty thousand projected this year and we're going to project this transfer out eighty-five thousand. And that is because of this page, the total budget page, which is our current budget. You'll see the electric fund, we transferred out more than, than what it brought in total with its, with the chews. Like, right there. You see how, you see how we took out more than what?
Yep.
And so that's depleted down, so we, we can't make that transaction again. So essentially, we have to take over the electric's burden.
You mean, get the electric back?
Well, no, I mean, take over its burden right now. That's, we're in a fifteen-year contract with.
Right.
Yep, so.
Okay. So you're still going to be bleeding money out of reserve, even with the radiator?
Yes, yes. Yep, not out of the water reserve, but those will be things that we'll have to look into. We're going to have to address more issues throughout other areas. Obviously, one of the things that we'll know if it's coming up is we have a garbage contract. We don't know what the price of garbage contract is. We haven't went out in five years. If it comes in high, garbage rates might have to be altered to sustain itself. At the end of the day, I know people, we have people who aren't fixed income, we have elderly, we have people to look out for. At the end of the day, we have an obligation to our community. We have to float ourselves and we're not doing that. I know we hit this hard on budget. We all know we're not doing that, so we're, we're trying to make the steps to make that work. And this is, this is one step forward towards it. I've heard people, I've talked to some people, asked about it. They said, suggest that we went higher. Let's, let's do a better step and cover it more. I've heard people say, you know, that's ridiculous, but it's, it's the first step in what we got to do.
Well, and one of the, just a reminder for everybody, one of the steps, I mean, Bob and the Health Department doing a good job of trying to clean up properties to help.
Evaluations.
Yes.
Yep.
And that's two years from now. I think, just a reminder, we need to keep on doing this to help that.
Yeah, because essentially what we're doing is we're subsidizing everything else through our utilities, so we're subsidizing the police, the parks, the pools. We're subsidizing all that through our utilities. Normally, that is done through the help of the electric department and we do do some, but obviously it can't support us all, so.
So what you're proposing right now is just a twelve dollar increase for the, just the meter fee or is there?
Yep, yep, and we're actually going to hold the gallon rate down. So we're not going to continue to raise it like as projected. So the, the gallon rate was projected to go.
Three dollars?
For the three dollars for over ten thousand and two twenty-five. We're projecting to hold it flat at two dollars.
The sewer rate and all that stays the same?
This is just water print, yep.
Okay.
Yep. And if you look down here, here's, if you look in the small print right there, at twenty-seven dollars for six hundred fifty-eight services for twelve months, we'll bring in two hundred thirteen thousand for two dollars per thousand gallons. That projected fifty-two thousand, which I believe was our average in nineteen. And the total income is the three seventeen, which is shown on the hypothetical right here at the hundred percent proposed rate. It's shown here on our, on our hypothetical budget, so. All right, like I said, if there's any questions within next month, comments, concerns from anybody in public or please reach out to me. We're open for any type of discussion.
On the reserves funding, you know, we keep pushing money and we're to cover things.
Yes, on the transfers, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes.
How long before you can't do that anymore?
If we don't, if we don't sustain this raise, we'll be pretty much defunct in less than two years.
So it's urgent.
It's, it's a necessity.
We got to do the minimum in there.
Yeah, for, for our water buying stuff, yeah.
Yeah, you have to have a minimum. So this is what the public needs to understand.
Right.
You're bleeding money from, you know, and what's a hundred and forty-four dollars a year?
Yep, and honestly, like I said, I've actually talked to some business owners and they suggest even higher. The one thing we don't have in our community, which some communities do have, is a business rate, which is usually higher than residential. For us, we're not, we don't have a whole lot of business and we're trying to grow business, our development is trying to push business. We feel that a higher business rate honestly really wouldn't, wouldn't help us out for really one big reason. Our three biggest customers are hospital, manor, and school. So you're not, you're, you're trying to gain money out of more taxpayer dollars, a lot of it is, so you're, you're still coming around yourself, so. I mean, if that's something that's an option someone wants to look into, is a different business rate? I mean, come talk to me, we're, we're more than happy to, to look at that, that venture too. We can add that in here. We can keep what we have, we can add more to the business and I mean, that's, that's an option we have. I think we have, oh, what is it, forty, sixty-ish business meters out of six hundred and fifty-eight, so we have six hundred residential and fifty-some businesses. So you're looking at a small portion, but, but if you, if it is a couple bucks more, every bit helps, you know, so I mean, that's not out of the question at all.
I mean, they are paying a business rate for the electricity.
Yes, they are.
And they are paying a business rate on trash, so it wouldn't be outside the realm.
No, it's common. It's very common.
But I understand what you're saying.
But, well, the only reason why I didn't propose that is because that wasn't in our structure before and I didn't know if this council had been, been discussion and had been, you know, vetted it and everything else, so.
Right.
But I'm more than open to a discussion like that, so.
So this is pretty much just to break even then?
Yep.
Yep. Unfortunately, yeah, that's, that's the ugly, yeah, we ducked her, yeah, that's. Like, well, that's a hypothetical budget. I mean, it could be twenty thousand dollars high.
I understand all that.
But that's, it's not, that budget is not out of the realm of accurate really. I mean, we have meters going out, we talked about during budget. We went through all the water department issues. It needs, it needs new infrastructure, it needs a lot of help and unfortunately, the rates are not supporting what it gives away and what it needs to sustain itself.
You weren't here, Jeremy, to know, but we had that discussion with Mr. Holton. But we're going to drop away the net that can be sucked out of the electric department. And all we got was bluster about, oh, we'll be fine, we'll get along. Well, not so much.
Yeah, there was a lot of things that we, that was not understood about that, that adventure that we took on for fifteen years, so.
Well, you know, it was concluded it was necessary because couldn't afford, couldn't afford to fix it. We had to turn it over to them, but on the other hand, that drops away that cash cow. I mean, what, what should have been maintenance was going to pay salaries. I mean, what, what should have been maintenance was going to pay salaries.
Yep, and I'm not taking it away, North Central's done a great job here, so I'm not saying by any means that it's a bad deal, um. But yeah, we need to, we need to find, find ways to make money, so that's another thing we can do. We do have other options along with this one to make more money is we can, we have the right in our contract with North Central to up the percentage of, uh, lease payment, we also use our electric rates. Uh, we haven't went down that adventure. Um, I, I foresee that to still come even with this in place.
Yeah, I, I think, and again, you weren't here to see that, but I think the, the presentation was, we're pretty close to the highest lease payment that they do anywhere right now. Trying to recover as much as possible. But you're right, it can be raised, so.
And the city is now a customer on the electric?
Yes, uh, that was, that was, that was the biggest hit, we actually didn't realize.
It cost something too.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say we didn't realize that. That was where I say we didn't know where we're getting to. Um, our street, our street lights took a big hit on us. So that was an extra almost fifty thousand dollars on our street budget, which we talked about during budget that most, nobody knew about, that we didn't expect, I, I think as, as a city, that, that jumped up on us. And it's not, it's not North Central's fault, we just, we didn't see it coming, I don't think we prepared for it. But we're here now and we're gonna, we're gonna move forward and hopefully fix it, so.
On the streetlights, just a bug in the ear, um, there is a company out of Israel that is working with cities on installing smart streetlights that are wifi capable and solar powered. And the, the city receives a revenue off of that, because basically what they're doing is they're getting the energy credits. So they're installing these things at no cost to the city through a grant. Um, Neely has installed two, um, so far.
We're not controlled by them now, it's, it's North Central, so that'd be up to them.
Right, but I'm just saying, if we, if they're costing us money, we'd be switching it over.
Um, I guess, any more related to water right now?
The figures that you're comparing, uh, you're saying that we're in like a seventeenth percentile, but I'm just, I'm, again, and there's always gonna be the questions.
Do I have that survey for you? Yes, I do, you can come see me and have it.
That, that would be the big question, I don't know if somebody would have, if I broke.
Come, come see me, it's, it's from the league again, it's a hundred and fifty meters. I don't know why you think I lie to you guys all the time, I don't.
Oh, it's not, we don't, we don't assume bad intentions, we assume that we wanna verify what you're saying is-
Yeah, they do, they go to Zion and ask for it.
I have the information, you can, you can come see me anytime.
We are lower. Pierce pays more, Ozzy pays more, Brunswick is paying more, everybody's paying more than us by quite a bit.
Yep, well, and our, our numbers show, we're not, we're not floating.
And I think one other benefit, perhaps, you don't really, is one of the reasons that we have such low valuations and we attract such a low common denominator sometimes is because of our cheap utility rates. And if we were to raise our utility rates, it may eliminate some of the bad element that we have an issue with in this community. Which is probably not a PC thing to say, but it's the truth.
Back, check back.
Try with the rates, huh?
Try it now.
Put that in there.
For the record, for the record, this past, not saying that.
You get to drive it out.
Yeah, so please, reach out to me, anybody, um, so choose.
Good presentation, Jeremy, thank you.
Snow routes are next, hey, I'm up again.
Okay, number thirteen, discussion action updates to snow emergency routes.
Yes, um, I brought this one forward, I felt like it was just, well, obviously it's a great time of day to bring it up. Uh, whoop, oh, it went there, guess not.
Eight o'clock, yeah. That's usually, yeah, a year ago was.
Snow route.
It went up earlier, so I don't know. It's in the packet.
Yep, it is in your packet. Um, so currently, you can read the resolution on the back sheet of your snow routes. Uh, when Kurt and I addressed this issue or looked at it, 'cause I brought it up, he, we feel, mostly me, I guess, that currently it doesn't make any sense to, to me as a person. Oh, there it is, perfect, outside looking in. So our current snow route, this one is not a current one. Our current one comes down through here, up, down, around the school, around, around the park. Uh, you can see the resolution in the back of this one, which is, uh, one through seven, Locust Street from West Street to Third Street, King Street from Highway twenty south to City Mainest Building, um, First Street from Locust Street to Harper Avenue, Third Street from Locust Street to Bell Avenue, all the streets within Section C, which is Business District, all the streets around the high school and the park. And then, this is the one that got me wondering why. Number seven, at the completion of all these other streets above, then we should go out and clean the fire department. Um, but if there's a fire call, then we'll go clean it so they can get in the shop. To me, that didn't make any sense, 'cause obviously, one, they're not gonna wait for us to clean it. And two, I am not for sure why the school and our park is emergency snowed up. 'Cause the twenty-eighth December, it snows two foot, we're not gonna clean it first. If the snow's that bad, they shouldn't be in school. Um, obviously, we use our best judgment, we go down there and help and plow snow, we, like today, you know, make my path and everything. Uh, but essentially, as Kurt and I were talking about, we wanted to make it, you know, more understandable, which is where, this is in here too, it's really light, 'cause that's what Kurt wanted to make sure that was in there. So essentially, we wanna make sure our two ma- three main deals is the fire hall, obviously for the EMTs, and then the spot to the manor, for the hospital and the hospital, and then all reaches to the highway. And then obviously after that would be the, uh, Business District. Now, obviously, this is all for your guys' s, you know, it's just, this is just a suggestion, if you guys like the way it is, it's fantastic. But at the end of the day, we're gonna clean the streets, it's not like, oh, after these streets are done, we're gonna go home. But these, this is what made most sense to us in, in a path. So it's just something, something to chew on and think about. And maybe there was good reasons for that part, but that's, that's something that we believe should, uh, it, it just doesn't make sense to me that if there's a fire call occurs, um, then the priority switches to them, that's after we clean off the park and the school and the Business District and, and all those things, so. I'm not just some fool for thought, if you guys are interested in, in all of that. Sorry, Brian, this is your sheet. I guess there's any questions, comments or concerns about that issue?
Well, the school does remove their own snow though, right? Just around-
On the sidewalks.
Some of these sidewalks?
Yeah. Yep. So like today, um, we removed the barricades and we, we pushed our path for the buses and stuff, I mean, we work together, obviously, I mean, we're one community and everything. But according to this, if we actually had, if somebody really wanted to question us, like I said, December twenty-eighth, no school, we gotta go clean the school before we're gonna go fire hall.
Yeah.
Granted, we know better, we don't do that, but we should make resolutions fit to what we do and not what somebody, what it says.
But do you need to just change this to say if school is in session?
I would, let them school at all, 'cause why is it an emergency?
'Cause there's two hundred kids getting stuck and crashing their cars?
But if it's that bad, they shouldn't be in school.
Well, sometimes a snowstorm might blow up in the afternoon.
Easy to say.
It was bad this afternoon.
But if they're already in school, I mean, it's gonna be clean over there, so.
Uh, and that's fine, if that's what, and if you guys wanna change anything, that's entirely-
My call, but you might wanna run it by the school personnel before you change it.
Well, it's this board decision, but, uh, we work on the school, but I mean, like I said, that's entirely up to this board.
What would they have altered just four years ago?
I, I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't have a-
I'd have to dig back.
Out of the fire hall?
And you know what, ma- maybe the school goes behind, behind the fire hall, maybe that makes more sense. Maybe, I, I don't know. To me, it didn't make sense that our EMTs couldn't get out, we, we cleaned the Business District and the school first. Um, if there is ever a call, especially seems like, 'cause they, they're operating quite a bit, but that's, that's where we were thinking that it didn't make much sense, like you said.
It didn't make much sense to clean your emergency routes to the manor and the hospital, but you can't get to the-
Ambulance.
Ambulance. That would've made no sense.
Yep.
I mean-
So is this the order that they went in?
Yeah, yep, it said, it said at completion, after all this is done above. Yeah, that's, that's why we, we weren't understanding, I, I wasn't understanding, I guess. I asked to see the snow routes this year, 'cause I've never seen them before, and I, I didn't understand why. And I'm, that's why I threw this out there. Like I said, if, if it's-
Well, I don't think there's any reason why it shouldn't be changed, but, I mean, I agree with the school maybe being on there. What, what order?
Yep.
That's up, but.
He ended up at the fire department, I mean, it doesn't have to be completely clean spotless, all we need is
A path.
Two or three paths up front and a couple paths in the back, wherever you can get vehicles parked in there.
Yep.
And I think Kyle and Mike were down here, what, two, three years ago, because we did have a call up there and we had guys getting stuck in the parking lot up there, we didn't grab the trucks out, but, and I think that's where it kinda came from, but.
I know, today was a great example, 'cause our guys actually pushed the fire hall first and the pass, one went to fire hall, the other one went to the the hospital and manor, mostly because during the day, you're not gonna clean the Business District, because there's cars parked all everywhere, you, you couldn't get to it anyway. Even if you wanted to, you wouldn't do a, a good job. So they actually waited for people to leave, and so you actually truly cleaned the streets in, in a proper manner.
Well, I'm gonna say, right now, between that, now and next meeting, use your guys' judgment.
Yep.
Come back with a little route in the past.
I, I just wanna put it out there to see if it was even, if you guys were even interested, I mean, it's entirely up to you guys.
Oh, I, I'm definitely, I mean, you guys are right, it's not in order. Or it shouldn't be, so.
I'm up next, fourteen as well, uh, business track.
Yep.
This is simply that, um, our trash, our trash service, uh, contract bid is gonna be, or our lease is gonna be done with Bud sanitation as of January thirty-first. Uh, I tried talking with Daryl today and we just couldn't, we just couldn't connect to actually talking about it. But essentially, we'll probably be putting out bids, and this is just a notification for, for trash haulers in the community, or for around the community. It's all our garbage, so. Will we receive bids probably, I'm assuming in December, January, we'll probably open them up, have us put them out, so.
What did Bud's sanitation charge last, for the last time?
Fifty-seven, fifty-seven twenty-four a year.
Have you guys thought about getting your own truck, hiring two part-time people to do it? Get rid of the cost of the containers and stuff like that, and your last smaller pounds are going to that.
Our containers are paid for as of February as well. Yep.
Yep, so actually, well, that, and that's still not, 'cause I'm, they are our totes now. So that, yes, that's, that's definitely an option out there. Uh, the biggest thing we have up front right now, 'cause I, we've actually talked about that for a while with the guys, uh, currently, couple issues is when we go on a truck, we gotta have upfront costs. Uh, we, we could hire part-time guys and fi- find the time and everything, uh, we could, we can make it happen. It's not out of the question to look at, no. It's flat on answer, no, it's not out of question to look at that, that business, that adventure. That's what this, that's what we're here to look at. Uh, we can put out bids, uh, we can reject all any bids if we so choose to go in that direction. Uh, the, the problem I see right now is with, uh, January thirty-first deadline, we gotta find a truck that's operationable, we've gotta hire guys, we've gotta make sure they have CDLs. The timeframe is real tight. Uh, now with that, you could, you could possibly have a bid or a lease instead of five years, go one year and then, then continue to look into, you know, give yourself time to build into that.
Right.
That's what I would suggest. Now, I would say, currently this year, it's not feasible. Um, but if that was a goal, I think you could, you could manipulate your lease to make it more adjustable for us.
You'd have to do a cost analysis.
Yeah, yep, yep, you'd have to do business study, cost analysis, and you'd have to give yourself time to, to look into that, but yeah, absolutely.
And I think the totes, the reason they were brought into the community is because plenty of you have more trash per ton than any other community around.
It's really, it's really cut back.
And it's really cut back, 'cause you, yeah, the, the rates of the transfer station in, uh, Jackson, they're going up and we pay for that, so.
Yeah, I think our final payment's in March of next year, and then we owe in the totes.
And I think people are used to it now.
Yeah.
Their, their lease contract with the tote, the tote lease slash buy, does say if they do, um, get another contract renewal, it would be like twenty-five cents a tote per month for any man, so somebody drives one over, burns one up, being able to pay for that, but at the end of the day, they're still ours, we don't have to have a managed contract with them, we can buy them up, right, fix them ourselves and, and send the payment to the person who started on fire. So.
Are there current issues with Bud sanitation, or we just bidding because we just do this?
The contract's up, yeah, it's time. I, I've already had one, one garbage contractor elsewhere call me about it. Uh, so he's interested in bidding it, I'm sure Bud, like I said, I didn't, I didn't get to communicate with him. But I'm sure that they'd be willing to rebid it, so.
Are there only two left in this area?
No, he's, no.
He, Bud's?
There's another one that contacted me out of, out of this area. Uh, I think, I think Asha's still, all trash too. And may, maybe you wanna bring in a new trash business here locally, if you wanna find two locals that have a truck and some guy.
Sure.
I'm trying to help out the heat, Professor. Yeah, I, I would like, I would ask for a motion to advertise for bids for the city.
I make a motion to advertise bids for the new trash rates service contract.
Second, any discussion? Bob?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries, number fifteen, discussion action, approval of general administration contract added eleven-sixty-two twenty for the twenty DTR zero-zero-five VTR downtown revitalization, uh, community development block grant, grant.
Right, this is the four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar DTR grant we just got awarded. Uh, this is the contract that you would have with Neenet. Um, Bruce has reviewed it and he had some comments, um, earlier, so I'll let Bruce talk about it.
And again, Lowell got right on it and answered a few questions I had. I commented for one thing, just sent a copy down to the office, that there is a ten-year record retention requirement, but that's just something we need to pay attention to, that's their business in administering the grant, to make sure that's clear and it gets done. I asked them to perhaps expand on the scope of work to talk, have it say something about, this is our downtown improvement contract. They have this generic, we'll take care of you contract number such and such, and that's really all it says. It doesn't say it's about the downtown improvement contract at all. But, yeah, again, I just left it to Lowell to maybe specify that. I did point out to both Lowell and the office that I don't check all the statutes they're quoting. They've got all that stuff in there about non-discrimination and statute this and statute that. I mean, I, you don't want me to spend fifteen hours reviewing this thing. It was just a quick run, and I think we trust them to do that correctly. And the rest of it, they've got all sorts of requirements about performance reviews, we can terminate them if they don't do the job. It all looked fine. So I essentially told Susan this afternoon with an email, I think we should just get about it. If Lowell wants to polish on this scope of work thing a little bit, well, more power to them. But the grant contract itself will talk about what's gonna be done with the money. Uh, it's just referred to so offhandedly in there, I just thought they could add a couple real sentences to talk about, this is your downtown improvement grant. But I think we can live with it. So I think you better get about it, they need to be on this and, and moving.
So this CDG will work the same way, you had a little, a little bit of taste of it when we did the downtown planning grant with influence, where they submit, uh, Neenet will submit a drawdown, um, the payment comes from the grant. In this situation, um, well, in that situation, the city put up that ten percent match. In this situation, the business owners are putting up the match. So we will just be issuing, we'll be issued the drawdowns, you'll approve the drawdowns, you'll already see individual applications from each business, so you know this is what the checks then are issued to the business owner, and there is no match, that comes from the business owner, so. You had a little bit of a taste of what that's gonna look like. You're gonna be seeing those drawdowns on a monthly basis, and you'll probably see it pretty heavy for the first year. And then, if you have to have extension for a second year or two, if there's additional money left over, we throw it all back in the pot, we do some more. In Creighton, we had to do it for three years, in Neely, we did it for three years, um, just kind of how it goes. So you'll get pretty good at it, but, um, that's basically kind of how it'll be.
Need a motion?
Yep.
A motion to approve the general administration contract.
Second?
Second.
Bob?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries, number sixteen, discussion action, approval of employee appreciation gifts in lieu of appreciation dinner.
Normally every year we have a little appreciation dinner in December, just for all the boards and employees, and with COVID, I just don't think that that's gonna be able to happen this year, so we didn't know. Um, in the past, we've given employees pound cash, just as kind of a thank you, um, gift. I didn't know since they're not getting a meal this year, if you wanted to increase that any or just keep it the same. That's kind of up to you guys. In the past, you've done fifty for full-time employees and twenty-five for part-timers. Since they're not getting, we're not doing the meal, if you wanted to increase that any or leave it, that's kind of at your discretion.
And then would it also be anything for the boards then, or?
We normally just do the meal for them, so.
That's why I just wondered.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's entirely up to you guys, I mean, that's, that's your call, so.
What do we usually spend for the meal, do you have any idea?
I think last year it was 500, and that was with, that was everybody, we paid for everybody, so. Not all the board, not all the board members would come.
Yeah.
Um, so it just kind of depends on how many show up. And then I think in clown cash last year was like, I want to say 700 or something is what it ended up being with all the employees, so.
What did Mary's charge per person, did they ever break it out?
I think it was like, I think Scott gave me like 10 or 11 bucks a plate, so he was really decent on what he charged me for a price, so. Uh, we didn't go outlandish on a meal or anything, I mean, it was a good meal, but we didn't spend 40 bucks a plate or anything, so.
So for city boards, I mean, could you do like 10 bucks, gift certificate somewhere?
And that's, that's up to the council.
10 bucks to the clown cash.
Yeah. Yeah, something, yeah.
Or yeah, sorry, I didn't say that wrong.
For the board members?
Yeah, for the board members.
You did, do you want to leave the employees' numbers the same, I mean, I, it doesn't.
It's not going to break, it's.
Yeah, we spent the money already.
I, I have no issue with it, I mean, we're thankful for the already.
We put up them all by 10, I don't know. So that's what we usually spend anyway.
Just put a note for next year, if we get out of the dinner, I mean, at night.
But a lot of companies are doing this, my company's doing it too.
Not having like a.
Right, not having a big party.
And I don't know if even, you know, Mary's would even want to host anything, because it's, I mean, your, your regulations changing tomorrow, so.
Yeah, we had some modifications to DHM.
Yeah, it's.
And I honestly think that it's going to get worse by the end of November and, and the state is probably going to dial us back down. Uh, we're, we're at stage four, I see us going back to what you saw maybe stage two, um, when it comes to restaurants and bars and that kind of stuff, so.
With a motion to approve the adjustment for the appreciation dinner to, or the amount, $10?
For the board members.
For the board members, and additional for the clown cash for the employees.
So $10 extra, okay.
Sixty forty-five.
If you award that perfectly, I'd.
Sixty thirty-five and 10?
Sixty thirty-five and 10.
Okay. Perfect.
I'll second that.
Second, any further discussion? Bob?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries, number 17, constant comments, Bob?
I don't even have any.
Pam?
No.
Tyler?
Nope, I don't.
Number 18, city attorney comments, consideration possible approval of engagement letter with Baylor Evan Mall for concerning updating personnel manual and/or other employment-related matters. And I gave you that speech last month, I don't need to repeat it all, but those folks are specialists. We've been working off this form that I think was a Mike Holton device from the internet that I never spent much time on, but we, in the course of all of our struggles, it was somewhat lacking in clarity. It needs polished according to state-of-the-art stuff, and Jeremy and Courtney had some other things they thought they might bring up. I mean, you were talking about waiting a while until you got a new council.
You're going to have a new personnel committee in a month or two, and I would think it'd be best for them probably to sit down and go through the current manual and see if there's anything.
My point on the Baylor Evan thing was, why not get them started and have them send in some suggestions?
Right, but you're going to have a new council next month, so there's really no rush. There's no rush right now, if we have a new council, that's kind of the new council if they want to do that. Because there's going to be new council up here, there's no sense in the old council voting on it if the new council doesn't want to do it, so.
I can't imagine that the new council is going to contradict the Omaha hotshots any more than this council.
And honestly, with everything, I haven't had time to sit down and read through the personnel manual to see what, you know.
Well, this is just coasting along, I'm suggesting it needs to be done, you can do it whenever you please. Anything else? No, I don't know anything else.
I have some questions for Bruce.
No.
So with our DTR, Jeremy, Courtney too, um, we have some demo money in there, and so are we looking at DCSI, are we looking at Curtis Garden, are we looking at that building, put Old Mary's building on 9th and Highway 20?
That's not on the agenda, we talked about it later after we.
Okay. Also, new agenda, um, with new board coming in, Courtney, I talked about this a little bit in the past, um, civility training for board members, not just the council, but like all of our city boards, we call it the agenda again, um, Senator Roll Affairs has been working on developing that program, we started it last summer, we were going to try to roll it out, and then COVID happened, um, if we're interested in doing something like that.
We actually just, we talked about having a workshop basically, um, for anybody that wants to come, but the council, board members, go over Open Meetings Act, um, procedures for what can go on agenda, who can place things on agenda, just basics that sometimes get overlooked.
Yeah.
Um, that you don't quite understand unless you've gone over it, so.
Would that be in-house?
Um, there are other communities that are interested in participating, um, Neely's interested, Osman is interested, um, Madison is interested. With the, they're, what they're talking about, yeah, that, that base level, and then that's included in this, and then on this, on a separate level, talking to them about civic duty, not running it on agenda, how you should really approach being a board member.
Is this a current webinar, is this a, a convention that's already out there?
So this was actually like a, a huge conference that they did in Fremont last summer, um, and now they're scaling it back, obviously with COVID, so they're willing to partner with individual communities, now, obviously, our DHMs are reducing capacity again, so i- it's something though that we would really like to do, um, across the county, even the county level is interested in getting all of their boards on board, so it may end up being a webinar, if that's the best way we can do it, and just all join from our own communities, but, um.
Is this different from the seminar the League of Municipalities puts on?
A little bit.
They do one virtually every year for newly elected city officials.
Well, I know there's, that's what I'm thinking of, but you had to go somewhere, didn't you?
Yeah, you do, and, but it, it's, that's a, a good program, and it's worth doing.
Very well.
And with COVID, we know that they're going to, they've done all of our training, um, virtual this year, we've done webinars this year for all of our staff, so it may be a webinar thing next year depending on how things are going, um.
Well, being nothing but for a webinar, I'd be interested in.
Yeah, I can get you some information, we can just talk about it, it's just something that, we've talked about it for a little while, and then this was like, you know, we really need.
Is there, is there a cost, I mean, I'm sure there's a cost.
There is a cost to it, um, it's about a thousand dollars, um, for the training, and they didn't put a limit on the people, which is why we kind of reached out and said who would all be interested in there, just every community's saying the same thing, you know? You just need to send your boards to this training, we, we run into these issues all the time, but beyond that, what's your civic duty? Beyond broad rules of order and all that stuff, because we all have issues with board and agendas and all that stuff, so it just, there's some exercises that are built in, and when you do it in person, it's nice because you can break out and do those things. Um, they're going to try to do it in Zoom with breakout chat rooms, but we'll see how it goes, but I can get you the information for it.
When, when's that set?
Well, we, we just have to set that up.
And then just, I sent you on email, your health measures change tomorrow, so, um, your indoor capacity now goes to 25% for meetings. Um, I'm going to contact the league as far as, I mean, we have these public hearings coming up, what we can and can't do as far as, you know, online access and all those kinds of things, because right now, it's still in-person is the only time you can have a meeting, so.
Attached to the, that piece the league put out this morning, and you had the stuff you had, and it was, there was a summary out, two-page thing. But attached to that, they had another write-up of the actual directed health measure, and I looked at it and decided I wanted it, so I printed it, it's about 15 pages, there's a lot more detail in there. I have not tried to absorb it all, but there's a, get a hold of that, and there's a lot more stuff right there for the detail.
I think the two-page was just the new stuff, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was just the new stuff.
Yeah, but I mean, but it's all these new changes in, in glaring detail, instead of just a little summary.
And then he, he did pass, um, Ricketts did pass that you can't attend a meeting via like Zoom or whatever, but you have to be quarantined or told to isolate by the health department, so.
Yeah.
Keep that in mind, if you are quarantined and we have a meeting, you can still attend, but we have to have proper notification for that to occur, so.
And how hard can that be, you just call them up out in O'Neill and say, I feel sick, and they're going to say, stay home, so then you're stuck. But you can attend by Zoom, and we can have the, the board members here individually attend by Zoom, or somehow electronically, but you do have to be under an order to stay home.
Where did I go to, like, when we had the deal for the pipeline?
It could be.
Wanted to ask questions, or?
Well, that's, that's different than what you can do for the public, this is just what can you do for your members? If you end up, if you end up and you can't have a quorum, so you can't even have a meeting, well, they can attend from home.
So you have a question, there's still not accepting questions through Zoom from, yeah.
Um, quick question, I have to pull the DTR committee together to start developing our application in the process for, um, the business owners. All, is the DTR committee, does their, does their meeting have to be publicly, like, put in a legal notice, is it public, or are they just a committee?
It's not the LB840 board, correct?
It's everybody on the LB840.
But they're not acting as the LB840?
No, they're the DTR committee.
I would.
I would say you'll be applying as our attorney.
Okay.
They're basically just a.
It's just a matter of what those folks with the grant will tolerate, but we've got to set up something. Do they have a structure in there, or do we need a separate committee?
No, yeah, there's a separate committee, and the, and you guys, when we applied for the DTR planning grant and approved to that committee, it's literally everyone on the LB840.
Well, if that comes together, we'll have to get it done.
But it's not like.
We have a committee, she's asking, does it have to be, does that be publicly noticed, does it have to be follow all the things as a public, what she's asking?
Because when they meet, when they meet, as we get into the, once they develop the application in the process, when they meet, they'll be going through the business owner applications, and like the LB840 committee being that oversight, saying, yes, we approved this, or we don't approve that, then it goes to you guys.
I think it better be counted as an open meeting device, just like the LB840 committee. Anything else? Just a reminder, tomorrow's Veterans Day, federal, state, county, and now city holiday. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.